Yeah, that's true. She isn't feeling well. Mayan?
Yes.
Okay, everybody, we're going to call our meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting tonight. And we're going to have a roll call by our City Clerk, Mercy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
If you all rise, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance, and it's going to be led by Councilwoman Amanda Rigby.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to public, original status, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So the next thing is the approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
There is no closed session scheduled tonight, and so at special meetings, there's no opportunity to provide, provided to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. So, and there's no presentation scheduled tonight because this is a special meeting. So the next thing on our agenda will be our consent calendar, and the recommendations on our consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the City Clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So with that, I'm going to go to the consent calendar. And I want to know if there's, I don't, I, there's nothing pulled off. I don't have, nothing from the audience has pulled off the consent calendar. So is anything, anybody in the?
Yes, ma'am.
C11's pulled, okay, and?
C10 and C5.
Let's see, hold on. C5, C10, and C11, was that what it was?
Yes.
Okay, with that, then I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots or your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then the next thing we'll go to is C5, which is Record Retention Policy Update. And I think Councilmember Rigby, you were the one that pulled that?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I just had a question or comment on page 18 of 40, paragraph C, formerly D, where it states, "The records destruction inventory list has been prepared from the Laserfish archive and regularly submitted for each department." Wait, sorry, that's not it. The one where it said regularly, just regularly, was that the one?
That's correct.
So we want to say, that is correct, the paragraph. Instead of regularly submitted for each department director's review, I think it should be spelled out a little bit more clearly about how often. So if we could say regularly, I understand the state says we have to use the word regularly. So can we say quarterly or make it clear that it will be done on a particular schedule?
Yes, I can do it quarterly.
Can we put in here that it would be done quarterly, quarterly submitted or submitted quarterly?
I will do that.
Okay, that was my recommendation.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion for that? Yes, okay, I move that on the rules pertaining to retention of records, under City Clerk's Responsibilities, Paragraph C, we replace the word regularly with quarterly.
Do I have a second? Somebody? Nobody wants a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item that was pulled is item C10, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that was pulled by?
That would be me again.
Okay.
Would you like a report?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm John Meyer, and I'm the Redevelopment and Housing Director. For your consideration this evening is the sale of two properties. The first is a successor agency property located at 127 Main Street, and it is staff's recommendation that we accept the offer of $425,000 from the Vista Chamber of Commerce. Second property is owned by the Community Development Commission, and we are recommending that we accept the offer of $475,000 from Jay Wentz. That concludes staff's presentation.
Did you have questions?
I just have a couple of comments on this. First, again, this is compared to what we purchased the properties for. This is another loss of $285,000 to taxpayers. And I wanted to point out that in looking at, and this will be discussed in discussion item number four with the financial report, things for the city have gone up in the last couple of years. Residential housing has increased. We have building permits that are going up considerably. And even though up to perhaps the beginning and the end of 2012, we've started to see an increase, a consistent uptick in building permit valuations in the city of Vista. And it says here in the report, "The valuation of building permits issued in the city of Vista totaled $29,165,278," which is up from the prior year of $743,000. Now, I understand this is just a picture in time, a snapshot in time, but we can kind of see a trend here. Our sales tax revenue has gone up, our residential prices have gone up. To me, that's an indication that the economy is coming back. And selling off our properties through the redevelopment at such a loss to the city, to me, I find very hard to take. And I understand that we've been mandated by the state to sell these properties, but there is no timeline on them. And I wanted to know for these two properties, when was the last time they were appraised?
The property at 127 Main Street was, the last appraisal for that property was likely at the time the property was purchased, which supported, would have supported the acquisition price. The other property on South Santa Fe has had three appraisals. The first appraisal was done as part of the acquisition process. It supported the $700,000. Then, I believe in 2010, there was a second appraisal, and that was at, or, excuse me, November of 2011. And the value, it was the same appraiser valued the property at $630,000. So there's quite a drop. And then the last time the property was appraised was June of 2013, conducted by a different appraiser, and the value was $605,000.
Okay, and I understand in the staff report, it says that these prices are concurrent or consistent with the broker's opinion of value. Can you remind everyone and myself again what's used to come to that conclusion? The indexes that are used and the timing for them?
We do have a representative from our broker with us this evening. But before we call him up, basically what they look at is the current properties that are for sale in, similar to the subject properties. And then they also look at what has recently sold. And then they do their best at estimating what they believe the broker opinion of value is. And then that's what the property is listed for. And then over exposure to time, we get offers or we don't get offers, and we have to make adjustments.
So when you say they look at other properties that have been sold, are they looking citywide, regionally, or just through their brokerage firm?
I would probably defer that. I believe it's citywide, it's like properties, and in some cases beyond city limits.
I just see the financial picture and the building in the city, the economic picture on almost every category getting better. It just seems that we shouldn't continue to be losing money on city properties. And the valuation of building permits from 2013, 14, and the same quarter for 2014, 15 fiscal year was up by 181.68%. And so it just leaves a bad taste in my mouth. And of course, I do want the chamber to own their own building. There's nothing against the chamber, and I know that Mr. Shaznabak knows that. So if we could ask the broker to come up perhaps and answer that question for me, I'd appreciate it. Hi.
This is Mark O'Drakovich with Lean Associates.
Comparable method. So as John mentioned, we would look at what buildings are listed for and then, and then what are actual sale comparables selling at. The most recent sale comparable is the Belching Beaver, purchase of the bank building. That was purchased for $200 per square foot. Zero deferred maintenance, freestanding building, its own parking lot. 430, so that's in the core of downtown, right? And then as we venture outside of downtown, for example, 430 Vista Village, just east of Kenny's Car Clinic, sold for $154 a square foot. 635 South Santa Fe, on South Santa Fe, sold for $143 a square foot. So outside of the downtown core, we're seeing prices hovering around $150 a foot.
Okay. Those are the same concerns I have every time we sell city property. I don't think that we're getting, I don't think the taxpayers are getting what they deserve from the properties, what they've earned for the properties. So I just think, I think there's a way that we could do better on the prices of these. So again, that's where I'm going with this agenda item. And again, Brett, so thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me your time.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was originally purchased with redevelopment dollars, these properties, or affordable housing?
The Chamber building was purchased with redevelopment dollars, and 603 South Santa Fe was purchased with housing dollars.
Okay. And on the Chamber building, we only get 14 cents on the dollar?
That is correct.
Because of the takeback from the state?
Because of the distribution to all the taxing entities. The city represents 14%.
Okay, so, I mean, I understand where Councilwoman Rigby's coming from on this. I mean, it does make sense. Unfortunately, I think our only alternative would be to wait out, right? I would think, and wait till the price comes up. But even then, I think we're, I guess we're only going to make $14,000 for every $100,000 it goes up. Is that right? So I don't know that waiting for it to make $14,000 for the citizens of Vista is worth putting our redevelopment or our regrowth for our downtown on hold. So, and I understand where you're coming from, but I just think that that would not be a smart thing for our downtown to do that. And I know that our chamber needs a different avenue to handle their finances for their building, and I support it. So I'd make a motion that we accept staff recommendation on this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, anybody else?
And I, just to tack on to what Deputy Mayor Aguilera said, I think this is an opportunity to have somebody purchase this and spark some of the development. If we sit on this in the hopes that in a year or two it might come up to a market value, it could be an island of, you know, undeveloped or unimproved property, that the benefit back to us, the value with potential development is far greater than the few dollars we might realize if it were to go up, so.
And it's better in the private sector's hands anyways than the government, so.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, did you want to say something else?
I did, yes, thank you. I understand what my colleagues are saying, but I'm still looking at not just the taxpayers of Vista, but I think for all of the taxing entities, we have a responsibility and a duty for all of our taxpayers. And I think with the trend that we are seeing over the last 18 months, I don't think it would be that long of a wait before we tried to realize a little bit more of a benefit for the community. So those are just my thoughts. I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, but I don't think waiting too much longer would be too much to ask. And even if it's just a little bit of a return, there are things that we could do with just a little bit of money in this community, like 128 feet of sunset that we need to get repaved. So count your pennies, and your dollars take care of themselves, I think is something someone said once, so, thank you.
But to wait for it to come up $100,000 for 14 could be a long time. And even if it's a couple of years, we could actually go into another recession in a couple of years, and it could be worth less. So anyway, Councilmember Campbell.
Quick question for staff. City manager may want to respond to this. We had a discussion regarding the sale to the Chamber. The question I have is, you know, is there financing, maybe the Chamber representative would like to respond, is the financing in place for them to acquisition this building currently? Or will there need to be some sort of provision by the city to accommodate them further?
I'd have Brett Shaznabak from the Chamber of Commerce come up and answer that question on their behalf.
So we have been in discussions with multiple different institutions, financial institutions, about the purchase of this building over time. And our requirement will be to come up with about 25% of a down payment on the purchase price. While we do have a sizable portion of that already on hand, our board feels it would be unwise to use all of that to put into this purchase because that would give us no reserves to kind of balance us out when we go through months of, when there's no big events and income's a little drier. So we are seeking to help with the down payment portion. We are seeking some contributions from some of our significant investors. How successful we'll be is still an open question. We have had some discussions with city staff about as a fallback, if those are not as successful as we'd like, possibly advancing some money to us that they would typically be granting us on a year-to-year basis, advancing some of it upfront to help. And so those discussions could still come into play.
And I would say that if the Chamber's not successful during the escrow period, primarily in the next three or four weeks, we would be coming back to the City Council with a potential proposal on advancing some money to them for council's consideration at the December 9th meeting.
So we have, do we have a motion and a second? I can't remember. Okay, if nobody else has anything, I would ask you to cast your votes, please. That motion passes with one no vote.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider and enter on the minutes. As the City Manager and I briefly mentioned, I told him yesterday, I think it's important that the successor agency property on Main Street be considered at the time in December in consideration with the escrow process on that and seeing how the financing goes. I'd like them both to be considered together. The motion to reconsider and enter on the minutes is a motion that I would put to the floor to have this discussion for this property again at the first meeting in December.
I don't understand what you just said.
This might, I don't know if anyone will second this particularly.
Are you reading it off your phone?
A motion to reconsider and enter on the minutes is a special motion that basically reconsiders this item in December.
The entire item?
The entire item. It would withhold the action, yes.
Councilwoman Rigby, I believe, asked a question. If the City Attorney has a question.
Can't hear her question. What is your question? Turn your mic.
I was just asking if the City Attorney had any counsel on this.
There is a motion on the floor to reconsider the item and to hold it off till December the 9th. At the moment, there is no second.
May I ask why?
The primary reason I'd like to reconsider it is, is I believe Mr. Shaznabak from the Chamber said that, you know, they were reaching out to a couple of their bigger donors. And if it's going to come back to the city, that we're kind of going to be asked to advance or front money to make the sale even possible for them, I think it's important that all the facts are on the table at the same time versus us authorizing the sale and entering into an agreement and then having to have them come back to us to ask for the money to make that even possible to move forward. And also, I think that we need to seriously consider some of the points that you brought up, that the value of the property is perhaps higher than the selling, the sale price that we're proposing, not only for this property, but for the 603 South Santa Fe. And I think that we need to have a little bit more of an in-depth presentation from not only our broker on this item, but potentially from staff as well on property values in the area and the trend, and have a little bit more information of that presented to the whole council at that time.
But you voted yes on this one?
Yes. That motion under our rules for Roberts Rules of Order requires that the maker of a motion to reconsider and place on the minutes vote yes on that item.
Councilmember Aguilera.
I think, I mean, I think you should just vote no now, and you should have made your case before we voted. To make the case after, it just makes no sense to me. So I think that, I can't support this. Our council may change. The face of our council may change by December, and I'm not comfortable with that. So I'll be voting no.
Oh, you're saying pushing, it doesn't, okay, Councilmember Coles.
Yeah. Our action doesn't necessarily lock us into an agreement to sell with the Chamber. I mean, this is simply setting a price to open negotiations, and how or whether they can pay for it is a whole nother matter. Is that not right?
Puts it in escrow.
Yeah, the action commits us to sell to the Chamber, puts it in escrow. A lot of things can happen in escrow, but it.
Okay, but it doesn't finalize any sale.
That, yeah, it wouldn't be finalized until the Chamber pays the asking price of the property.
Right. So if, if the worst-case scenario, they can't, can't come up with their own donor base or their own revenue, they would have to come to the council to get an agreement for us to provide a funding mechanism for their, for them to acquire the property, which the council can accept or reject. So this doesn't lock us into anything. And for my limited time to vote, you know, I've enjoyed the relationships we've had with the Chamber. The city's been a good partner with the Chamber, the Chamber with the city. And their presence downtown has, to me, embellished the whole feature that is provided to the business and tourists and shoppers that come downtown. So for what it's worth, I'd like to do what we can as a city to make that a successful partnership.
Okay, so with, Councilmember Rigby, did you have something again?
Yes, thank you. I do understand that we've had sales of other properties that have fallen through, and they've visited us a second time. So I know that if something happens with financing, they come back to us. I do, however, like the idea, and I've been trying to get this, to have a more in-depth study on property values in the city of Vista, because I really think it's not always a matter of waiting for the market to catch up to us. I think we're being undersold here. I think we could do better now as somewhat, and then more in the future. So I would like to have that discussion, but I'm not going to be able to second your motion. But I would like to perhaps have that discussion of more in-depth study of property values, commercial property in the city.
It doesn't have, motion doesn't have a second, so it dies, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on to C11, I think that would be, Councilmember Rigby again. Turn your mic, turn your mic on, please.
If the deputy mayor would like to go first, he's, I think he spoke first to pull it.
Thank you. Yes, I have some, really just, I just wanted to vocalize my concerns with what we're doing here. State of California has, I guess overturned, are, in my, in my view, privileged to run the city the way we want to run it and by not allowing us to utilize our charter status and are forcing us to use prevailing wages on projects. So, you know, the voters of Vista approved the charter back many years ago in order to, you know, with the idea of being able to save tax dollars. And this C11, this, again, this whole motion by the state to overturn our charter, not overturning our charter, but our main reason for having a charter in place is, it's just disappointing to me. You know, again, the state is just grabbing more power and telling us what we can and can't do in our, in our city. And it's really unfortunate. And I have a real hard time supporting this because the city of Vista, for those of you that don't know, has actually been out in the forefront fighting against the state in this area. And unfortunately, we have lost so far. I understand that we are looking to appeal this further, if that's, is that true?
That's, well, the, the next step will actually be a trial on the preliminary injunction. And if that is not successful, then it will be appealed.
Okay. So it does look like we're, at this point, on the downhill slide on winning this. But again, I just wanted to be able, have the opportunity to vocalize my opinion. I have a hard time, like I said, supporting this. I know the state is threatening to, I guess, take some of our dollars away, withhold money from us if we do not have this ordinance in place, or this resolution in place. So at this point, like I said, I'm not supporting it, but I just want to get my words out there.
I actually agree with you, but the state gives us a significant amount of money that they would withhold from us. So if we, if we don't do this, then they'll withhold that money, and that would be detrimental to our budget. We'd, then we'd have to go back and, I don't know, cut more things or something. But, you know, because we're dependent on the state for, like, they, I think our, our sales tax goes through the state and some things that they could withhold from us. So, anyway, I'll say, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there's a lot to say on SB 7 here. SB 7 is control from Sacramento to the local communities, taking away our autonomy and our control. And it's in direct response to the Supreme Court decision that the city of Vista won against the state of California. We won on every level, all the way up to the Supreme Court, and this is their response to it because they didn't like it. They even referenced that court decision in SB 7. And I think it's wrong, but that's not for us to debate here tonight. Sacramento is just wrong on so many levels on this. But I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who I'm directing them to.
You'd be directing them to me.
Okay. So it says here, because I'm reading the text off the state website for SB 7. So it says here, because I'm reading the text off the state website for SB 7, "The bill would prohibit a charter city from receiving or using state funding or financial assistance for a construction project if the city has a charter provision or ordinance that authorizes a contractor to not comply with prevailing wages." State funding or financial assistance for a construction project. And then if you look down further into paragraph C-4, the next section down, section 2, C, paragraph C subsection 4, "State funding or financial assistance includes direct state funding, state loans and loan guarantees, state tax credits, and any other type of state financial support for a construction project." Now, some people have stated that they were concerned that the state could just withhold monies at will for anything that we are owed. This goes on to say that state funding or financial assistance does not include revenues the charter cities are entitled to receive without conditions under the California Constitution. So my question is, I am reading this to say that it will only withhold funding for projects, not funding in general that we're owed. Is that correct? For construction projects?
There is disagreement among all of the public agency lawyers as to what the scope of the withholding would actually be. The state was required to issue regulations that would make all of that clear. Needless to say, those have never been issued. Everyone is in the dark. And the two items mentioned, for example, in the agenda report are, first of all, gas tax revenues, all of which go to construction, they're all used for road construction. And the second one would be transient local funding, again, all of which is used for construction. The, the problem with putting too much faith in what the legislature appears to say is that the legislature has always been able to maneuver around their words. And, for example, we used to have a gas tax, and then that disappeared and became a subvention coming back the other way, because instead of being a sales tax, become an excise tax. And as a result, no one can with any confidence tell you how much money is at risk, except that those two items together total over $5 million.
So the next question I have is, these, these monies are at stake for a construction project, over $25,000, that, for, for, you know, under city public works contracts. How much of that do we do in a year? Public works contracts, construction that would qualify under this bill? I mean, how, what, what kind of damage would we be looking at?
So we have, another potential impact would be the state revolving fund loans that we have. So, for example, the last one we did, I believe, was $22 million. That, in some form, could be put in jeopardy.
That's correct. And all of our street and road work is construction, and it's largely gas tax funded. I'm afraid I don't personally know how much, how many millions that is a year.
So that's just our ongoing public works programs, is all considered construction, public construction?
Yes.
And it's all over $25,000.
The overlay, the slurry seal that's going on right now, the, some of the work, street work on South Santa Fe is all construction-related.
Is all considered public work construction. It just, it just really is frustrating, and it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, that after we fought the State of California at the local level, the appellate court, and we won in the state Supreme Court, the legislature turns around and does this in direct response, and then we have to sit here tonight and decide whether or not we're just going to say, oh, never mind. And, and I, I can't do that. I, I just, it's so exceedingly frustrating that Sacramento would take away the rights of the city when we know what's best for our community, and, and they don't. I've said that from here before. So thank you very much, I, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Campbell.
SB 7 litigation that the city entered into, as the council is all aware, I was the only no vote, entering into that litigation, suing the state over that legislation. You know, ultimately, at the end of the day, this is an issue that, whether you agree or disagree with the prevailing wage in SB 7, this is an item I feel that we have to pass, because quite simply, the risk is too great to the community. The council would put millions of dollars on the table for potentially losing, should this item not pass. I, you know, this really isn't a political issue, it's not bashing Sacramento or knowing what's best locally. I think this issue is about being responsible and making sure that we don't put at risk millions and millions of dollars in direct construction money, and tens of millions of dollars potentially in revolving fund loans for construction projects. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt item C-11, the city compliance with the state prevailing wage statutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. My only thing I, prevailing wage, prevailing wage in a big city is different than prevailing wage in a smaller city, and so, I mean, not, you know, the, the wages that are paid. And so sometimes, you know, if you're Los Angeles or San Francisco, the wages are, are different than they're paid maybe in Southern California. So, you know, it's kind of unfair, prevailing wage, I think, is an unfair thing, so, anyway, but we have to, we have to go with it, so please cast your votes. Motion passes three to two. Moving on. The next issues are, are discussion items, items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by staff and agency member input. And tonight, we have four discussion items. The first one being the Central Vista Business Improvement District update. So we're going to receive a report from Kevin Hamm, our, going to do it, he's our...
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kevin Hamm.
Redevelopment Director.
Director of Economic Development, and with me is Rachel Belt. She's our management analyst in economic development, and she'll be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. In June of this year, the city council approved an agreement with the Vista Village Business Association, the VVBA, to administer the Central Vista Business Improvement District, the CVBID. At that time, the city council requested regular updates from the VVBA on the status of the administration of the CVBID work plan. This report covers activities from July through September 2014. As required by the CVBID administration agreement, which is attached as Exhibit 2, the city is in receipt of the first quarter CVBID work plan update, which has been approved and accepted by the CVBID Advisory Board. The work plan update details the VVBA activities for both CVBID-funded items and those activities funded by VVBA revenues. Status updates on the progress of each activity are included as well. Since the execution of the administration agreement, there have been several important organizational developments, which the VVBA representatives will address this evening as part of their presentation. City staff continues to work with the VVBA to ensure proper reporting and compliance with the administration agreement, and to also serve as an ongoing resource. Mr. Hamm and I are available to answer any questions following the presentation. And now at this time, I would like to introduce Cliff Kaiser, the president of the Vista Village Business Association, who will present the work plan report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for this opportunity. The Vista Village Business Association, I am the volunteer president of a board of 13 members. 10 of those members are downtown business owners. I'm going to run through this briefly and, and hopefully answer some of your questions. The, we are divided into essentially four committees under the California Main Street program. One of them is promotions, things that we do in the downtown, activities and events. Ones that we've completed recently include the Taste of Vista, which was actually the last fiscal year, but it was very, only a week before the end of the fiscal year, was very successful. It's a growing event, and we, a plan to continue to grow that event. Our annual rod run, we have the 25th anniversary year this year, August 3rd. Weather was threatening, the turnout wasn't as great as we had hoped. We had 300 cars register, about 250 of them showed up. And the car participants we surveyed afterwards were very pleased with the, with the event. We ran the Vista Village Birthday Celebration, we created that as a goodwill event where we invest money to bring people into the downtown, without the intent of generating revenue out of that. That was well received as well. We supported the Arts Foundation and the LA, LA Arts Festival, which was also well received in the downtown, and they're hoping to grow that very nicely next year. And with all these promotions, we update the downtown kiosk signage, so people know what's going on. And I have one of those right here, which I'll show you in just a moment. Promotions that are coming up is the Winter Festival, now's that moment. The Winter Festival is an annual event that's the first Friday and Saturday of December. There'll be Christmas caroling in four different areas of downtown by four or five different church groups, Living Nativity at Tom's One Day Shoe Repair, a couple of different groups putting on little skits there. We'll have carnival rides, kids' bouncy rides, horse-drawn carriages, taking people from Starbucks down to Lush and back around on Broadway. We're producing a Vista Village passport, which will encourage patrons to shop at different merchants in the downtown area between the release of that passport until December 21st, and then they'll turn that passport, that endorsed passport, in to win the prizes, similar to, and it'll probably go in conjunction with the Shop Vista program to a certain extent. And then the Friday evening stuff will be culminated with a tree lighting in the Kerkorian Courtyard, which you are, of course, all invited to join us for that particular portion at 6:15, and Silent Night by the choirs in the community that stays around till 8:45. Other promotions coming up, another goodwill event, the Health and Safety Day in February, it'll be our second time running that one. The fifth annual St. Patrick's Day Parade and Festival, the Sunday before St. Patrick's Day in March. The Rhythm and Brews Festival, run by the San Diego Brewers Guild, will help promote that, and perhaps become a stakeholder in that event as well. Will help the Chamber support and advertise their Strawberry Festival on Memorial Day weekend, and again, we'll have our annual Taste of Vista. And now our 26th Annual Rod Run coming up. Oops. Another committee that we have is Economic Restructuring. Their purpose in life is to brand the downtown, to get people to recognize the downtown, fill empty buildings, build on empty lots. We help in certain ways, a couple of them with some member surveys. We surveyed to see what our members thought of the G8 project, now 100 Main Street, and provided that feedback to the staff. We're also helped issue the parking survey, which is part of the downtown specific plan, and the parking management plan update. As you all know, the downtown Vista's had a public Wi-Fi available for several years. It was a joint project between the Chamber and the VVBA. That has slowly deteriorated to the point where it's no longer operational. We expect to have that operational again on a limited basis here in the next few weeks, and then seek funds to light up the entire footprint that was lit up before. Our design committee is, purpose is to make downtown look good. It's centered around the facade improvement program to a large extent, but we also seek grants from outside agencies. We had a large grant from the San Diego County that allowed us to do the mural, the 395 mural on the Lush building. It also did the bike racks and the string lighting, which just went up this past weekend again, that stays up between about this timeframe until the daylight savings time. Brightens up the downtown, makes it look really good, and they're also on the poles, the street poles. Facade improvements, we've just approved one that was completed with the Art Beat on Main Street, Poise Salon is, has one application that's in that we are working with them, and we believe Curbside will be submitting, Curbside Cafe will be submitting an application as well. Couple of our board members and volunteers have been walking the streets at night, pointing out several lights that have been out, and Public Works is working on getting those turned back on. There's a grant request out to put ash cans at many places in, in downtown, so that, that doesn't, those cigarette butts don't end up on the ground. And we also had a great meeting with the city staff, Kevin Hamm, John Conley, John Meyer, and the design committee sat down at the same time for lunch and said, hey, where are we going? I think Councilman Rigby was, woman Rigby was there as well. Where are you guys going, where are we going? Let's make sure that our plans are in sync, and we'll probably do that as well in the future. Organization committee is centered around making sure our internal processes and bookkeeping is correct. When the current leadership of the VVBA took over, there was a lot of challenges. It took us a while to sort through those things. We hired a new CPA, our treasurer, Jonathan Coino, has invested a ton of hours, and we've got the, the books in order, chart of accounts cleaned up, the books are making sense. All our payables are, are paid up, whereas in the past, we had several that were overdue. And we're working with the organization committee to make sure those processes that we're all using get documented, so that when turnover happens, when these volunteers, set of volunteers goes away, there'll be some good, solid procedures in place. We're also looking at shifting, not looking, we're actually in the midst of shifting to a fund-based accounting system, so that the monies that come in from the assessments, the bid assessments, goes into its pot, the money that comes in from the city grant goes into its pot, money that the VVBA makes on events and stuff like that will be separated. It'll make the reporting easier, it'll allow us to know which monies belong into which fiscal year, into which pot they go in, and it'll, less questions to answer, because it'll be clear. It's similar to what you guys all do here at the city on a much, much, much smaller basis. The big question, of course, is VVBA management. Since January, the VVBA has been without an executive director. We hired an interim executive director, and that is no longer with us. The challenge with that position is that we have a fairly low budget, meaning we have a fairly low salary for that position, and it's a huge workload. We are looking at alternatives to an executive director to manage the VVBA, one of them being a management firm. We've had discussions with a firm called New City America that runs Little Italy, and we're seeking out other ones similar to that, that would, that's their, their, their role in life, is to run downtown districts. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The third mile that we're looking at is a part-time executive director, or an outsourced manager, somebody that would work for us part-time and have some entry-level staff or mid-level staff to run the day-to-day operations. Currently, we are working with our, our treasurer, Jonathan Coino, and we have engaged him on a small contract to take care of some of the bookkeeping issues, the finance issues, and help us with some of the events and the office administration through the end of this calendar year. One of the things that could help, and this is what I was alluding to earlier about the New City America option, they have said that they will manage the VVBA if the VVBA pursues a property and business improvement district, or what we like to call a community benefit district. And we are, several on the board are very much in favor on that, that, that approach, and we have not voted on moving in that direction, but at the same time, it requires an investment to study whether that's possible. You know, essentially, if you're going to be asking to assess property owners on their property to improve the downtown, they have to have a say in that matter. So this feasibility study would ask those property owners, you know, what is, what, what are their thoughts, what would the boundaries be of the district, and what would the, the assessment rates be? We are optimistic that we can further those discussions here in the next couple of months about the formation of a community benefit district. The question that often comes up, which you asked us back when you were rewarding the contract last year, is why the VVBA, and we think these are the core issue, the, the core attributes of the VVBA that may get right suited for this, this endeavor. First, Vista's downtown is small, it's fairly well-defined, and we have, you know, 10 of our 13 board members are merchants that own businesses or are managers... our 13 board members are merchants that own businesses or are managers in that downtown area. They've got skin in the game, they're invested in the success, they want to see it vibrant, we want to see it vibrant. That's why, it's a good fit there. We are also the owners, so to speak, of the certified Main Street designation for Vista as the VVBA. We'll continue to bring that for renewal year after year and find that to be a valuable asset to the city. We're focused entirely on the downtown, no other distractions. We want to see vibrancy in downtown and that's where we focus. We're also a nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable organization, which helps a little bit sometimes on our grant solicitations to help fund other things in the downtown area. We do have challenges. We don't have a large budget, $125,000 to $130,000 annually. Most of that money comes from the assessment fees and the city grant, about $100,000 of that, $125,000. But we also have fairly high overhead, which we are working to cut in different areas. One of those big ones being our rent at 150 East Broadway. We're looking for alternatives to that when that lease expires. The board members are all business owners, small business owners, that are working their business, trying to make it succeed and to get their time to contribute to the vibrancy in different ways is a challenge. There's a lot of them that put a lot of work into it, but we end up burning them out. And then they have to, they go off and say, I can't, I can't do it anymore. The actual administration of the Central Vista Business Improvement District, the funds that we get from, funneled via the city, is a huge administrative load. Not complaining about that, I'm just stating the fact that that takes time for us to do the quarterly reports, to make sure all the monies are in the right places, to make sure the Ts are crossed, that the Is are dotted, and to pay the staff to do all those things and the volunteers to help with that as well. So those challenges remain. We're working on minimizing those challenges or mitigating those challenges, but I'm confident right now that the VVBA is on a path to sustained production, productive effort. I don't expect us to have $200,000 in revenues from events here in the next year, but I think our major events can be built up over the next few years. And if we develop, if we create the community benefit district, that's an opportunity for a significant amount of funds to help the downtown as well. I think the city's investment of $40,000 on top of the assessment fees is a very good investment of the city's, or the taxpayers' monies. I think the return on that investment is very high, as well as the individual assessment fees that the businesses pay with the number of people that we bring down into the downtown area and with the improvements that we try to bring to the table. And that's all I have.
This is a discussion item, but it's also information item. So do we, anybody have any? Councilmember Rigby?
Sorry, thank you. Regarding the search for an executive director, how have you got about, I know, I understand that you had placed an ad on Craigslist. Have you gone to any other avenues looking for an executive director?
We have the-
To hire someone in-house?
Yes, we have. We have the job description and the position advertised on the California Main Street Alliance website. It's been there for several months. And we actually queried the executive director there, asking, you know, any advice on the job posting. And she reported that it was, you know, it was great posting, just nobody's hitting. We also have it posted with the University of San Diego, University of California, San Diego Urban Land Department, had a couple of resumes come in from that venue, but not really qualified for the job, and as well as Cal State San Marcos.
Any other questions? Councilmember Aguilera?
It's not really a question, I guess, just to repeat, you and I met a couple days ago and, I guess, yesterday. In our discussion, I mentioned that I would like to see maybe what the VVBA can do to grow their revenue, something different. Because as you and I discussed, even a 10% or even a 20% growth in revenue would be less than an extra $10,000 a year. And I really think that's kind of where we need to see is, from the board, is ideas of how we're gonna, or how you're gonna go ahead and generate more revenue for the organization. And I'm not asking for that tonight. I just, I think before you come to us, I think it's in March or so?
Probably February.
February. It would be nice to hear some different ideas rather than, I mean, you guys have some great programs that we discussed and you showed us this evening, many of which are very successful. But again, just even a 20% growth, which would be fantastic from year to year, would only be a small amount in gain in revenue for the organization. So I'm just wondering if there's another idea and maybe the P bid is something and you guys are discussing, or you are discussing, but maybe that is the solution to generating that more, that bigger revenue. But I think that if you had a solid plan in place in February, that would certainly help you at that time.
Well, and there are some other Main Street programs even here in San Diego County that are fairly successful in the generation of revenue. We're going to talk with Oceanside Main Street, for example. They have their Thursday night farmer's market every week, which is highly successful and generates a ton of money for them. That's built up over time, over the years, but, and they're also a coastal city, so there's a lot of factors involved. But yes, there are other ideas out there and we're going to talk to some of these other organizations to see what they're doing that is successful.
Are grants a big part of these Main Street organizations' revenue?
I don't know that answer.
So, I mean, that's something to look into if some of these other-
Well, it was for us last year at $35,000.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Had talked earlier also, and you're looking at studying the possibility of another business district, which would, would that include all the current businesses in the BID or expand it to additional ones or be selective? Or just be a tax increase for the whole district altogether?
It wouldn't be a tax increase. It would be an assessment that they volunteer to provide.
They could be, take it off in or out?
No, if the district is formed, everybody would be charged the assessment. So part of that-
It's a tax.
Feasibility study is, is to determine some of those answers. You know, what are the boundaries? There's no requirement that they have the same boundaries as the current business improvement district. And what the rates are, they're going to be charged and, well, that's it, the rates and the boundaries. And if there's interest, you know, if we go through this study and they find out that there's not enough interest, if we put it up for a vote, that it'll fail, then chances of failure, then we wouldn't pursue it.
Okay, thank you.
That's kind of information only. I support you guys. I think you do a lot of good programs down there. And when I served on the VVBA back years ago, the downtown is always the window to your city. And so I don't know how it is now, but back years ago and for several years, most Main Street cities are not self-sufficient. Most of them are, need to be helped by the cities that they're in. So, but I'd like to know nowadays if that still is the case. So, but you guys are doing a good job down there and I'd like that you went through here and it looks like you had a successful year and I wish you good luck for next year.
Thank you.
That was information only, so. Our next item is 100 Main Street property. So who's going to take that? John Meyer is going to take that. He's our, and John Conley, Director of Redevelopment and Director of our Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. With me tonight is John Conley, our Community Development Director. Tonight's discussion is on 100 Main Street. This is located at the northeast corner of South Santa Fe Avenue and Main Street and was assembled from multiple properties as part of the Vista Village Drive and Main Street realignment back in the 90s. There is a 10-year history of working with potential development partners to make, to establish a mixed-use project at this site. In the past, the site has been referred to as the demonstration block because 10 years ago, it was seen as the starting point for the revitalization of the Paseo-Santa Fe corridor. That revitalization effort is underway today with the construction of the Streetscape Improvement Projects, the two affordable housing projects, and a new mix of affordable, excuse me, a new mix of businesses within the downtown area. There is strong interest from the development community on the future development of the property. And this location remains a very desirable location centered in the downtown. It's close proximity to the Sprinter Station. Parking remains an important issue in the historic downtown and this is being addressed through the Downtown Vista Specific Plan Update, which will include a parking needs analysis and updated parking standards. Staff sees the repositioning of 100 Main Street from a demonstration block to a jewel in the crown. Our recommendation is to wait until the Downtown Vista Specific Plan Update is completed and in the interim, continue to meet with interested developers to understand what the potential gauge, to properly gauge the scope of development, what the market will bear, and then also the timing of those development opportunities. After that is completed, we would recommend to be bringing this item back to the City Council for final direction. That concludes staff's presentation and we're available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the councilmembers regarding this? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a question about Indiana? No. The street right next to G8, east of it? Is it Indiana? Is it possible to close that and somehow either annex that to that property or somehow provide additional parking or at least give us a little more play with the property? Because I know, and parking is not my major concern downtown, but I know that for others it is a major concern and especially for some of our businesses. So I'm willing to see what we can do to maybe expand that property, which would make it easier for a developer to provide onsite parking or provide parking for some of the businesses in our downtown. I know that a lot of people turn into that street to go into downtown, but perhaps we could find other streets for them to use or, I just don't know how, how critical is that street for our downtown if we were to do something additional with it rather than a entry to our downtown?
So we looked at vacating Indiana with some prior development proposals on this property. It is possible to vacate. If we do do that, we get half of the property, get this lot and half of the property to the lot on the other side, which would be where the brewery is. So you don't get all of the property to this lot. It's public right of way and that's the vacation process. It is likely going to be an access point if there is underground parking in the development of this property because that's the most logical point for taking access into a garage on the site. So we do feel like an access point there is probably warranted, whether it's one-way or two-way or there's parking or however that's configured is really going to be more a developer's choice and what makes sense for them. And if it works, traffic-wise, yes, the street can be closed.
So that sounds like it's on the table then, really?
Yes, we've discussed it with other developers and if someone comes to the table again on this property, it's something that we could certainly discuss with them.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In looking at the staff report on page two, it states in here that based on previous direction in action of the State Department of Finance, the staff has two options here for us to look at based on those discussions with the state. Number two is list the property as future development for the city to maintain it. That's where I would like to go. I would like to see that property stay under the control of the city. So I don't know, what is the feasibility of that? I mean, I see a lot of other things going on here, including, we talked previously about the 14 taxing entities with, you know, that we have to answer to, the other taxpayers around. What would be realistic, the feasibility of option two?
If I could seek some clarification, are you referring to the city maintaining ownership of the property and for what purpose in terms of?
I would just like to see the city have more control over what goes on there, what happens on that lot. I, I'm, and I've discussed this with the city manager and some of the other properties that we had originally purchased for redevelopment when, you know, when we were looking at redeveloping downtown and other parts of the city, having to give that property or sell that property off to other people, we no longer have control over what happens with those properties and we've lost part of the vision that we had for the future of Vista because it's dependent on what those entities, those private entities want to do. I see that particular lot to be integral to the downtown area and, as you had said, a gem in the crown of the city. And I would like to see the city maintain control over what happens to it and how it's developed.
I think staff shares your concern over future control of the property. Unfortunately, with the dissolution of redevelopment, some of that control has been taken away. Certainly, under option one, and let me step back, you know, this property as a successor agency property has to be listed on our long-range property management plan. And when we had that plan approved, this was part of a recognized obligation, which was the previous disposition and development agreement. So moving forward, at some point, we'll need to modify the long-range property management plan. And we have basically five choices, three of which aren't really applicable to this and that's why we listed the two, the sale of property and the future development. If the city chose to simply purchase the property at fair market value, that would be something we could do and we would go through the successor agency, the Oversight Board, and through to the Department of Finance. And whether it's being sold to a developer or sold to the city, we believe that that is something the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance should support. The other thing we could do, which is I think what you're, you wouldn't be supportive, and that would be to simply put a for-sale sign out on the corner and list it with the broker and then just sell it to the highest bidder who comes along. The function of listing it as future development is really if the city wants to use the property and in particularly wants to purchase it for less than fair market value. So there may be several different examples of how that may occur. If the city wanted to turn the entire site into a park and didn't want to pay fair market value of a commercial, then we could determine what the value was as a park and then that would require us to then go to all 14 taxing entities and convince them that it's in their long-term best interest to take that initial hit in the distribution of their share of the sale proceeds. In that scenario, we see it as something that was not likely and that's why we mentioned that in the staff report. Another scenario is if the development community came back to us and said, we think the highest and best use for this property is, you know, a mixed-use project with some combination of residential units over commercial. It parks itself, but the rents don't support construction today, so we can't afford to pay you fair market value for it. pay you fair market value for it." We could then, similar to the way redevelopment used to work, we could negotiate a below-market rate value for that property, but then we would still have to go and meet and enter into those compensation agreements with all 14.
Has that ever been done before?
I understand it has been done in limited cases across the state. I'm familiar with another community who had purchased a piece of property, the redevelopment agency had purchased it. It was always intended to be a parking structure, so that at some point in the future, when the adjacent regional mall wanted to expand, then they could expand their leasable area, and the redevelopment agency would pick up the extra parking demand. In that case, the parking structure also supported a cultural center adjacent. So that was a very unique situation. They were able to negotiate the deal with the, with the taxing entities.
Thank you.
So I don't see anybody else who wants it. What would you recommend that we, if we wanted to hold it for, if we want it to be developed and we want to have some control over it, then what would you, how do you suggest we, what do you suggest we do here?
Complete, complete control would be for the city to purchase it at fair market value. But that, the suggestion from staff, though, is to work with the development community, in essence, to partner with them, to see the development that we want done on it, not to just sell it and let it go and then have some development crop up that the city's not in favor of. So what we're recommending here is going forward, talking with the development community at this point in time, letting the parking management study through the Downtown Specific Plan play out, and then come back to you to have a discussion on issuing RFPs at the right time.
Is that number one or number two?
That is all three recommendations there in the report on page number three.
Oh, number three, okay. Because I'd like to have control over it, and I, and I'm not supportive of building anything on it until we have solved the parking issue in downtown for the businesses that are down there, so.
And that, and that's why number two there says, "Let's better understand the downtown parking study when it's fully developed and property for council," and that'll give us an opportunity then to make a more educated decision on moving forward.
Okay, then I would make that, I would, I'll make a motion. I'll motion that staff recommendation that's here at number one, two, and, and number three. So I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Do you want to also say anything, or no?
Yeah, I just, I think that's probably the most prudent avenue we can take at this point. I think the last time when we discussed this property, I stated something similar to this, and that is it, this was supposed to be our kickoff project for our downtown. And, you know, as you continue to look around, if you stand in the middle of that property, which I have recently quite a bit, everything is going up around it. So our downtown's already been kicked off, so the purpose of, of this property was to get downtown kicked off. That's done. So we need to really figure out where downtown is, is headed and, and what the businesses, what they're, they're going to need, what the citizens of Vista need, and we need to put some vision behind this in order to develop our downtown. It very well could be the same sort of project that we've been discussing for the last eight years, you know, but it could be something completely different. And I think once we take a look at the Downtown Vista Specific Plan and the parking requirements, and we got a little time under our belt, we'll have a better idea of what that vision is and we can, where we can develop that vision. So I think waiting a little bit is, is not a bad idea in this case.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. So the three recommendations on page three, meet informally with interested parties, wait until the approval of the Downtown Specific Plan, and issue requests for proposals. Those three, I'm thinking, don't align with option number two on page two regarding the city holding on to it for future development. And to me, that still gives a little bit too much control elsewhere, so I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Okay, so anybody else? Councilmember Coles, you got to say something? No? We have a motion, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I do, I, I was going to call for the vote, but, but I would, I, I think that the staff's recommendation leaves us with the best alternatives for looking at the future down the road, seeing what interests are going to develop, and, and giving us some of the control. We're not just turning it over to somebody to design and put in what they want. So I'd like to retain as much as we can, and I, I would support the motion on the floor.
Okay, then I don't see anybody else, any speakers, so I would say, cast your votes, please. That's four to one, the motion passes. And we also have a speaker, Brad Peterson, who wanted to talk about downtown, and I apologize for, he was, he was actually wanting to talk on the lasted thing, and I, this got stuck under some paperwork, so I'm sorry, Brad. But it's kind of the same subject, downtown.
It is. So thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Peterson. I work for Edward Jones. I've been Downtown Vista, running a business for 20 years. I'm located at 236 East Broadway, although you'd have a hard time finding it right now because my street sign has been missing for about a year, and so you have to look for us. I have called the city and gotten little response. So before I get started, though, I also run the Vista Education Foundation. I'd like to present to Mr. Coles a little plaque and a thank you for his contributions to our charity.
Thank you.
Very nice.
I think one thing we have to recognize downtown is Cliff, as he mentioned it the first part of the meeting, is a volunteer, as well as everybody on that board. And so it takes a lot of effort and a lot of courage to come up here and stand before an organization that has had problems in the past. So I compliment Cliff and the board for what they do. Number one is, we have, we have a lot of stuff going on in Downtown Vista right now, and even though Cliff said the Wi-Fi really hasn't been active for a little bit, it actually hasn't worked for a long time. I think the city is generating additional revenue, creating a fun environment downtown and, and a younger group. Wi-Fi is critical. My question to you is, why don't we give the money so that we can get the Wi-Fi up and running? This is an issue for downtown, and it's an issue for tax revenue, and I think we need to support the bid in a better way. We have business owners that pay a tax, the bid fee, of which a large percentage goes back in the city in the form of rents and fees. I talked to Cliff earlier today. At a minimum, that represents 30% of my tax that goes directly back to the city versus being used to do events and make the city a more appetizing place to live and work. So I would recommend that the city revisit the amount that they give to the bid in some way, or to, to the Vista Business Organization, and maybe come up with some new numbers, because they're working hard to make it work. The other thing is, and this is earlier to your point of real estate, we have a bad neighbor in our town, and that is you guys. If you look at your property, this is one of the properties that you guys own, and frankly, it's blighted. So when you buy a business and it's up and running, and then you close it down, and you don't do anything with it, and you're wondering, "Why aren't we getting property value for this?", this is exactly why. So as a business, if you're going to look at controlling your property, you should run the stuff that you have first before you ask for more. And so as a bid member in this area, you guys have been a bad neighbor for many years, and I would strongly consider you looking at that before you take on new projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda are ice cream vendor regulations, and I think Tony Winnie is going to take, and both of you. Ally Zimmerman, our city manager, and Tony Winnie is our assistant to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the promotion.
What did I call you? The city manager?
Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. Here with me tonight is Tony Winnie, our Assistant City Manager. He'll be providing you a staff report.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about our current ice cream vendor regulations, and the city currently has nine licensed ice cream vendors in the city who are governed by the Municipal Code Section 5.52. The code was last amended in 1991 and regulates the hours of operation, sound amplification, locations of operation, parking, product offerings, vehicle condition and safety, signage, and other things. In 1991, city staff recommended additional regulations be put upon signage and adding additional code enforcement staff to enforce regulations, but they were not adopted at that time. The current Vista Municipal Code requires our ice cream vendors to secure a vending permit issued by the city, and then after passing an annual inspection, which is conducted by our code enforcement staff, operators must also secure a separate health permit from the County of San Diego. Documentation must be kept within the vehicle at all times, and the cost for the inspection the City of Vista charges is $68. Ice cream vendors must also hold a valid City of Vista business license, which must be renewed annually. The city does not require a fingerprint or background check on individuals. The City Municipal Code also currently prohibits ice cream truck operators from having anyone other than the operator and one other employee onboard inside the vehicle, which prevents customers from being inside the vehicle at any time. Cities of Escondido and Oceanside place parameters on locations of operation for safety reasons similar to those listed in the Municipal Code here in the City of Vista. Cities of Encinitas and Solana Beach require ice cream vendors to pass a LifeScan fingerprint background check at an additional cost of $20 and $32, respectively. This concludes the staff report. Myself and Ms. Zimmerman are here to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Okay. Looks like Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my only concern, like I mentioned last time, was I just think it's a good idea to do background checks, and however that has to be accomplished. But I think that should be a requirement before a license is issued to these ice cream vendors who are going to be around children. I was kind of taken aback when I found out that, that we didn't require that. Other organizations, or other organizations that primarily deal with children do require that, and I know we require that for our youth coaches and that. I just think that would be a smart thing to do. And then as far as their regulation on the hours, I mean, I, I think we just go with a set time. If they, they think they need another hour, get it 8:00 p.m., the dawn, dusk, and all that stuff, I think is subject to interpretation. As myself and the city manager discussed, it depends on how tall you are when the sun actually sets. So I think if we just put it at a hard time, it makes it easier for anybody, I'm assuming it's, it's only going to be sheriff that's going to be enforcing this. It's going to make it much easier on them if it's 8:01 or if it's 7:59, they're not having to determine when the sun actually set. So I would suggest we go with a hard-set time. But most importantly, I think the background checks is, is what I'm requesting.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. Just to, to follow up on Deputy Mayor Aguilera's question, and I don't know if you have the answer, or perhaps if Captain Nesbit back there might. What is the issue? What problems have we had in determining sunset? Because I, you know, sunset, I mean, it changes so frequently. If you put a number on it, next week it's going to be a lot darker, you know, as we, we go into different seasons. So I think it's hard to put a fast number on sunset. I think the way it says now, half an hour after sunset. So I wasn't sure if there is, if we have data to discuss on what tickets we have issued, what citations have been issued for violating the current code. Do we know that? Anybody?
I don't believe that we do know that. To my knowledge, we don't get a lot of complaints about the, the trucks and when they're there. If there are complaints, the sheriff deals with them, but we haven't pulled those calls for service.
Okay.
From what I'm aware of, Councilwoman, there's only been one instance with a ice cream truck that we've either issued an NOV or a ticket within the last five or six years.
Okay, so that, that's good. Well, I, I would like to, I would like to move, and I know that we have other people wanting to discuss, but I would like to move that we change the verbiage on the hours of operation to read no earlier than 10:00 a.m. and no later than half an hour after sunset, but not to exceed 8:00 p.m. during daylight savings time, which basically extends an hour in daylight savings time for them, for the, the ice cream vendors. And I, I would also like to see the LifeScan fingerprint background check included as part of a permitting requirement. So can I put that all in one motion? Or does it have to be two separate motions?
However you want to do it.
I would include all that in one motion, then.
Okay. Councilmember Coles?
Do we need to deal with the motion, or can we go ahead and talk?
You haven't got a second yet, so.
Well, my comments are, basically reflect what's been said already, that background checks, I think, are a good idea. The, the issue with the, the time is that it's almost unenforceable, because we don't have, I mean, this is a very low priority for our, our patrol units to be following around the, the vehicles, and to have just a fixed time, 8 o'clock. The, the complaint that came to me from one of the vendors who was trying to comply with the law was that he's trying to obey, and he watches everybody else not complying, and felt that he was maybe being picked on. So I think if we have just a set time, it's pretty unilateral, everybody knows what it is, and then it's easy to enforce. There's, there's no interpretation about, you know, sunset, dusk, dawn, whatever. So I, I would stick with the, the languages we have here, and second that motion if it's been made.
That hasn't been made, so you have to.
Okay. Well, I'd make the motion to, to adopt the proposal here before us.
Okay. Councilmember Campbell?
First, a quick question for the city attorney. There seems to be some confusion maybe about the ease of enforcement of defining sunset as a particular time. I'm very familiar in other industries that the state imposes regulations that are very similar to this, where it says, you know, one half an hour before, one half an hour after sunset, a particular activity is to stop. My understanding is that there is a legal, very easily defined time that sunset is. Is that correct?
Yes, the sunset is a defined time in the, in the Civil Code. I couldn't give you the definition offhand, but also anyone with a portable phone can easily look up sunrise/ sunset times. They're posted every day, and the weather's jammed.
And so that, that's kind of my point, is I'd like to see that we keep that, because having a fixed time throughout the year, the length of the day changes so dramatically that we're going to wind up having these operators legally operating in basic darkness, where under the current language, that would not be allowed, because we have the not to exceed. I think the language that Councilwoman Rigby suggested is the language that I would prefer to see used, is it meets the criteria, and it does expand it to 8:00 p.m., which was what I was going to ask that we do. The other criteria that I'd like to see is the background check required, and the one thing that I haven't heard, but it does appear that all the other cities are allowing, at least Carl's about Escondido, Oceanside, and San Marcos, is candy sales are allowed. Is there a particular reason initially that we sought out to prohibit that and not allow it, or is that something that we could allow in? That's a comment that I've received from one of the operators, is that they would like to see that allowed, because it would make up a substantial portion of their gross receipts.
To answer your question, back in 1991, when the council last considered this issue, it was in response to some instances where candy was being sold by ice cream vendors that was being imported from that was being imported from Mexico, and the safety of that candy was in doubt. So as a result, the council decided to remove that as an item that the ice cream vendors could sell at that time. In 2006, the state adopted some new laws that placed some additional regulations on the manufacture of candy. So the safety of that candy has improved since 2006.
So I believe the motion, is the motion still on the floor from Councilwoman Rigby?
It is, I think it's waiting for a second.
If you'd be, I'd be willing to second that motion, or I'd like to offer a substitute motion to that.
Add the candy?
To add candy sales are allowed.
I would add that to the motion.
Okay, then I would second that motion.
Okay, well.
This has sparked an interest in, you know, I think, knowing now that there is a legal definition of what sunset is, maybe this, there is some merit to looking at this because I, in the back of my mind, having, like, right now, it's only 7:00. And having these vendors out at 8:00 on winter nights, that's what would be allowed if the proposal that we have on the, that I made the motion for would occur. People would, could be out at this hour selling, selling on the streets. Is that right? So this proposal would be sunset, as defined, there's a legal interpretation, or 8:00. So in the summertime, they would have to quit at 8:00, even though it's still light? But that would be the outer, or?
That's the outer edge, for daylight savings.
I need to have your mic so we can hear what you're saying.
Yes, Councilman. The outer edge of that timeframe would be 8:00 during daylight savings.
Okay, I think I can be persuaded to agree with that. Regarding the candy sales, are there any other issues that, than what you've described? And thank you for having that background, that staff thinks we should restrict or otherwise limit candy sales from these trucks?
What I would recommend is that we survey the other municipal codes who allow for candy, and if they have any restrictions or definitions that seem appropriate, we'll bring that back within the ordinance for your consideration.
My only question there would be unrestricted candy sales and what that might lead to. If we could, if there's a way to kind of define the types of candy, the quantity, the sizes, you know, we're still dealing with childhood obesity as a problem. And I would like to be sensitive to that if we do include candy sales. Not that I may get to vote on it, but that's, that would be my, so, yeah, I think I could support the motion that's now on the floor.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the timing issue is not a big deal to me. I mean, 8:00, 7:00, doesn't matter to me. I mean, as long as it's easier for the sheriff, I think that's really the, they're the ones that have to enforce it, so I can support that, that's fine. So my biggest thing is just the background checks.
When you say background check, is it, do you think you're going, is it like the LifeScan? Is that what, how they'll do that? I see that some cities have the LifeScan.
Yeah, I would think. LifeScan background check, yeah. It's a pretty easy process.
Yeah, yeah.
Make them pay for it, it's part of their licensing.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
What does that cost? What does it cost?
Thirty bucks, something like that.
It depends on what levels of LifeScan you require. There's a state scan, and then there's also a federal scan. So the state's scan currently costs $32, the federal scan costs $15.
A state scan is more than the federal scan? Councilmember Rigby.
Which gives you the best results, or the results differ?
Federal scan.
I think it just depends on where they may have committed previous crimes, if any.
I think what we, from a staff perspective, we'd recommend doing both the state and the federal to cover all bases, and that's how we treat employees and contractors.
Both youth groups do both, yeah.
Before my motion, I want to keep it the way it is, but staff would handle the parameters of the candy sales? Is that correct? So I don't have to identify the candy sale parameters in my motion?
No, you don't. When we bring an ordinance for your consideration, it will have that in there, and the council can accept it or make changes as needed.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your information. I appreciate it.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving to the next thing, our fourth discussion and our last discussion item is the fiscal year 2014-15 first quarter financial report. Dale Nielsen, our Director of Finance and our Treasurer, will give us that report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, I'm presenting the fiscal year 2014-15 first quarter financial report. As this is the first report for this fiscal year, I thought I'd spend a moment or two talking about some of the economic changes that we've seen for this fiscal year. We briefly discussed some of these items in a previous item that was presented here, but overall, the assessed value within the city is up, using rough numbers, about 4%. Assessed values, 4%. Now, when you break that out between, if you were to divide the whole city area into two islands, one of them is the successor agency, or what used to be the redevelopment island, and then the City of Vista Island outside of redevelopment, the City of Vista Island, the assessed values are up roughly about 6%. And inside the redevelopment area, the assessed values are up about 2% for a net overall combined of about 4.8%, I believe. Sales tax seems to be still doing very nicely. When you compare the second quarter sales tax numbers, which is the most recently available at this time, you know, March through June, that sales tax is up over 7% from the same quarter a year ago. So that tends to indicate that the local economy continues to improve. Things are looking up. I would just give a note of caution, though, is I'm sure we all, you know, read in the newspaper, the world economy is once again in a kind of a very tenuous situation. You know, Japan, I think, today took some pretty drastic measures, as I think they're in a third quarter of a recession now. There's some items going up, going on in the European markets right now. We don't live in this island of America anymore. Things that happen worldwide tend to impact us a lot more than they used to. So while things are looking up, I think we can look optimistically, but also have to look cautiously, with a bit of caution with that. Now, with that being said, on with the report. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations for the first quarter. Not a whole lot has happened thus far in the year. Exhibit three on page 10 of the report provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of September 30th. As of September 30th, the general fund has received about 12.8% of its total budgeted resources for the year. Now, I know that you may be thinking, hmm, first quarter, 25%, 12%? That doesn't sound real great. But we have to remember that there's a number of very large revenue items, particularly in the general fund, particularly like property taxes. We've received very little property tax from the county until, you know, December and April. You know, that's roughly $10 million, you know, 15% of our general fund budget. We haven't received any of that money yet because people haven't paid their property taxes yet, they're not due. We have a couple other large revenue sources, the motor vehicle in lieu property tax and the sales tax triple flip. We receive those payments in January and May, once again, substantial payments to the general fund. The SDG, SDGNE franchise fee tax, which is roughly about $1 million, we don't receive that until April. So the summer months for a typical city is kind of a slow month on revenue, so being at 12% at this point is not any cause for concern. We also have a number of items that were received in July and August that, for accounting reasons and rules, were pulled back to the prior fiscal year because that's when they were earned. Exhibit five on page 16 presents similar information for general fund expenditures. At this time, they're at 14.9% of the total appropriated amount has been spent. There's a number of recommended operating budget changes at this time. All of them are funded with either increased revenues or used reserves, so therefore have no negative impact on the estimated year-end fund balance. Detailed discussion on each of these items can be found on exhibit two, which is on page eight of the report. One of those items, that you may recall, on the fourth quarter report, we appropriated some year-end fund balance to complete retrofitting the LED streetlights within the city. As I stated back then, there is an item on this report to do the other half of that, to complete that funding. There is also three recommended CIP budget adjustments. The resolutions to adjust the operating and CIP budgets for the city can be found as exhibits nine and 10, beginning on page 20 of the report. There's also a number of recommended personnel changes at this time. Detailed discussion on those are on exhibit 11, with the resolution amending the city classification and compensation index on exhibit 12. Those exhibits begin on page 26 of the report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions? If no questions, is this information only? Is this information?
Well, there are some resolutions.
Oh, there's some resolutions?
Yeah.
Oh, recommendations, oh, okay. So I would entertain a motion, or I can make it. I could recommend staff's recommendations, I guess all four of them, that's what you're looking for, right?
I'll second. That was a motion.
That was a motion?
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Okay, cast your votes in, please. Motion passes unanimously. We have one more thing left tonight. We have a public hearing tonight. It is fees for city services and recreation and community services policies and procedures. It's a public hearing to consider fee changes for various city services. First, we're going to hear the staff report, and then the public will have an opportunity to comment. Oh, there's so much public left, I don't know. Those wishing to speak should present their speaker slips to the city clerk, and then please come to the podium and speak directly into the microphone for no longer than three minutes. The city council will then discuss the item, and once the public hearing is closed, there's no further opportunity for the public to address the council. So, the public hearing is now open, and the Community Development Director, that's not Conley, it says Conley here. Bill Fortmiller will be, will be, present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Bill Fortmiller, Director of Recreation and Community Services. With me tonight is Donna Meester, our management analyst, who'll actually be doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Annually, the Recreation and Community Services Department reviews the facility rental and program fees, and that's what we have before you tonight. As we know, in the past few years, the Recreation and Community Services has experienced economic changes, and we expect those changes to continue in the upcoming years. The changes that we have seen are increased costs from Vista irrigation, anywhere from 3% to 5% depending on the year, SDGNE, 3% to 5% as well, and the California minimum wage, as we all know, in July of 2014 went from $8 an hour to $9 an hour, and in January 2016, already mandated to go from $9 to $10 per hour. We've also seen increases from our vendor contracts, contracts such as our janitorial for cleaning all of our facilities, busing for our camp program, and general supplies. We also have regular annual inflationary increases that we've seen internally. The council has approved a subsidy of $200,000 for the cultural arts budget, and $275,000 for the senior nutrition budget, $275,000 for the Wave Water Park, and a self-sufficiency level of 70% for the recreation programs. In 2012-13 fiscal year, the cultural arts subsidy was actually zero, and that, of course, is after the foundation contribution. 2013, again, 13-14, excuse me, the subsidy was zero, again, after the Moonlight Foundation's contribution. The council approved subsidy for the Wave Water Park at this time was $450,000. It has since been changed, having paid off the debt. In 2012-13, the actual subsidy was $219,000, and in 2013-14, $367,919. To offset these increased costs, we are proposing for your consideration this evening a general admission increase at the Wave Water Park of $1 per person, facility rental, the private facility rental cost increase of $50 per rental, and for a small private rental of a cabana, $5, a large rental cabana, $10, and $15 for private rental of the water pool, water polo pool. And I hope you can see it, it's not too small, but this is the current general admission at $16.95 for the Wave Water Park, and showing that increase of $1 to $17.95 for general admission to the Wave Water Park. And that just shows the dollar admission to each of the levels of admission. This is also the current for the facility rental fees. You'll see that the private park rental depends on how many guests you will have as to what your hourly rate will be, and there's just an addition of $15 to each of those. The water polo pool, like I said, with the $15, and the cabana rentals with $5 or $10 increase. In recreation, the increase that we have proposed for your consideration tonight in day camp is to recover the increased vendor cost of the busing, and that is basically in the adventure camp. They go on a daily field trip, and so there is a huge cost to busing in that program. In the facility rentals, as I mentioned, we have an increase in our vendor for janitorial services, and this is basically just a pass-through expense. We are charged for the janitorial, and we pass that on to any renter that we have, and that will be increasing as well. We've received that information from the public works, from the actual vendor. And we would like to have a new offering of the Buena Vista Park for cross-country meets to establish a fee of $100 per event used for Vista Youth. And this is the current proposed, current, excuse me, and the proposed. So you see a small increase in the day camp and the Buena Vista cross-country, that is, would be a new established fee. A little bit of history on our rates. The Wave Water Park has not been before you to increase their rates since 2011. Senior Services in 2012 increased their out-and-about program from 5 to 10, and last year, they did increase facility rentals by 6%. Recreation came before you last year. We increased the sports and day camp by 5%, and the early childhood education by 3%. And cultural arts basically comes before you in history every other year. Last time they were here was 2014. We have not made any changes to the Adobe School Program since 2010. We have not made any changes to the Adobe School Program since 2010. Tonight, we are not proposing any changes to the cultural arts, senior services, Rancho Buena Vista, Adobe, or any field uses for recreation. In addition to looking at the fees annually, we also review our policies and procedures for facility rentals, program refunds, et cetera. And some of the changes are semantics, some are policies that we have in place that have not been formalized, and we would propose to do that this evening. One is that we would like to have the groups that rent on a regular basis not receive their refund after each individual rental. For instance, they come in every month, you would just keep that deposit on hand, it would roll over. That would save in staff time of a refund collection, refund collection. We are requesting to change the definition of a teen event. Currently, you must be a Vista resident and attend a Vista school district, and we would like to remove the requirement that you must attend a Vista school. There are several city residents that attend private schools, or even outside the city in charter schools, it's very popular these days. We would also request that you review having the folks that rent our facilities provide the insurance upfront, or pay for the special city enforced insurance. Currently, what happens is sometimes they say, "Oh, I'll bring it in," and then we spend staff time chasing it. We are requesting you consider to, we have due dates for fees in our refund policy, and depending on the center, they're all over the map right now, and we'd like to consolidate that, and have JP, Jim Porter, Thibodeau, and the senior center all have their fees due within 90 days prior to the rental date. Due to the popularity of the Adobe and Morrisby Vance, we would like to have those due 180 days prior to the rental date. Currently, some are at 180, some are at 30, some are at 90, and we'd just like to consolidate that. And have that refund policy also follow the payment policy, mirroring that same timeframe. Currently, in practice, we do not allow youth events at the Adobe, given the delicate nature of the building, and we would just like to formalize that policy this evening. In addition to the policies, we would like to have you consider a senior cosponsored facility rental provider. This would be somebody who would be able to provide a service to our seniors at the senior center, either free or below market rate. So if the senior had to go out and pay for these services by attending or achieving those services at the senior center, they would get them at a reduced rate. We would like to have a policy for these folks to become senior center cosponsored, and that would be the following regulations. The organization must have open enrollment or attendance policy, allowing all general public. They must provide a service that's not currently served to the participants. They must provide the service free of charge or below market rate, and free charge to the city. And the organization will go through an approval process by the senior advisory committee. And finally, in the cultural caravan, we would like to formalize the current operating policies and procedures, including their payment due dates, that is on their ticketing That concludes our presentation. Mr. Fortmiller and I are available for questions at this time.
Okay, do any, do any of you have, there's no, really, I don't see any public testimony. I don't have any speakers at all, so I guess we would probably move to close of public hearing. Would that what I do now?
Not before discussion.
Oh, after discussion, okay. So if you have any questions prior to public testimony, but there's no public testimony. So, okay, so council, it's time for discussion. Councilmember Rigby, I'll get there.
That's okay. I don't remember pushing the button, but I do have a question. It says the fiscal impact, staff projects an annual increase of approximately $56,000 to the Recreation and Community Services revenues. So there was a formula used to calculate that. What is the anticipated increase in fees to the city based on those items that you discussed having an impact on the increased rates? Did that make sense?
If I understand your question correctly, what impact will we, in dollar value, see on those increases? We anticipate that the minimum wage will have an increase to, I have that here, $50,000 was this year's current increase? That was the impact of minimum wage at the Wave Water Park. We anticipate in the fiscal year 15-16, that impact will be $25,000. And in recreation, we saw a $35,000 increase due to minimum wage last, this current fiscal year, and in 15-16, we anticipate giving current staffing the same, attendance the same, $20,000.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yes. I think you've made some reasonable projections, and the fee increases are certainly not outrageous, and they're in line with the expected increases that we're facing, and even to make up for some of the past losses that we've incurred. So I think it's timely to do this. The one question I had was the $100 fee for cross-country. It said for Vista. Now, what if the school district has a meet with other schools? How would that work?
Under the reciprocal billing, the school district is still for free. And actually, what we've done in the past, if a group wanted to do a cross-country meet, there's three picnic sites there at the park, they would rent all three sites. And it was like $96, so we're instituting a fee just for cross-country, which would take it up, round it up to about $100.
So other schools from, you know, if they have five school meets?
Clubs from the outside, but if there's a...
Clubs, this would be for clubs, not necessarily school meets.
Right. School district, school district meets would be free of charge.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a concern with number 12, which has to deal with the senior center and cosponsored My only concern, I think the section that says that it's going to, I guess, be approved by the senior commission or something?
Correct.
I think that'll probably resolve it, but I'm just concerned that some organization might come in, offer free services. You see, basically, they're seminars, but they're really designed to sell. How are we going to avoid that happening?
Again, it would be similar to when a group comes for the, a youth league comes before the park and Recreation Commission to be classified as a recognized youth league. The staff would do a presentation, make the presentation to the commission with a recommendation, and the commission would...
Oh, you said similar to that. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I got, I got lost with the youth organizations. Okay, so that's kind of our safety net, is going to be that commission?
Right. The commission would make the decision of the staff, there'd be a staff report, a staff recommendation, and then hopefully, if it's of that nature, the staff would discourage the person from the beginning, if they still proceed, be able to persuade the commission to that.
Okay. And then my other concern was with number 10, the cancellation slash refunds. I'm not sure if that's the right number, but somewhere you said that the, for the Morris Vance Room, and I believe the Rancho Adobe, the, with the application, the fees had to be paid 180 days in advance, right? What happens if somebody has a wedding scheduled and something goes wrong, and 90 days before the date they cancel, do they only get 50% back, or they get nothing back?
That's correct. If they do cancel outside of the cancellation policy, they do not get a refund.
One reason we're somewhat strict on that is, we have a chance, particularly Adobe is very popular during, from March 15th to October 15th, and, but for a wedding, you book those out well in advance. If someone cancels 90 days before, we have limited opportunities to re-rent that facility, and so it's a loss of revenue. I mean, if there's really extenuating circumstances, they can always make an appeal, and we can, you know, consider it then.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, well, I think it's great that it's that popular. So, I mean, how much are we talking about that it would cost the young couple?
Well, the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe is about $3,500.
Wow. Well, deposit, deposits, like, only a thousand.
Well, prior to their rental, though, they have to pay it full, so if they were to cancel, yeah.
They would lose $3,500, huh? Wow.
And that's actually very affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Just to follow up on that question, 180 days is a long ways out there, and I understand, I understand why, but heaven forbid a tragedy befall this couple. Do you have a policy in place where you could visit extenuating circumstances?
Can, we can take, we, we've had some incidents in the past where it's, we've taken the request to the city manager, and there have been occasions when we have, such as a death in the family or something like that, extreme circumstances. Sometimes we just changed our mind, you know, that's not as extreme as...
Councilmember Coles?
On that line, if you were, do you ever have an occasion where somebody has to cancel, that if you can re-rent it, do you, you know, I mean, part of the problem is you lose out on a rental date, but is there an opportunity where if you do find a renter, you do find a recovery of that, or is that being too extra?
We don't have that in the policy, but I guess we could put a provision in there if we were able to, you know.
I'm just asking the question, do you, is that something you'd think would be worth looking at, or would you rather just leave it like we have it now?
It might be a little staff time prohibitive to be able to track who canceled. Did we re-rent it? And then how long do we wait until, have we re-rented it prior to giving them, or telling them, "You're not getting a refund." "Oh, maybe you will get a refund, it just depends, wait and see." It might get into a communication nightmare, he said, she said.
Okay. As long as there is this little safety net where they can appeal, and you could at least consider something, I, I'm comfortable with that.
I might add to the council that this is industry standard for the refund timeframe, so we're not doing anything out of the ordinary that the private sector isn't already doing.
Sure.
And weddings, we plan for a long time out. They plan a year out for their weddings, you know, so, anyway. So do I have a motion? I don't see any more discussion going on.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the recommendation.
Is it possible for us to separate the two resolutions into two motions?
Is that a legal question, or a me?
That's a you question.
Oh. What are the...
The two resolutions are to approve the increase in fees. The second one is to approve the amendment to the services, policies, and procedures.
Sure. I don't, I don't mind separating them. I guess I'll make the motion to approve the first part of that, the fee increase.
Have a second? Anybody?
I'll second it.
Cast your votes, please. That's three to two, it passes. So the next motion?
I'll move that we adopt the amendment of the Recreation and Community Services policies and procedures.
I'll second, I mean, nobody's talking. Please cast your votes. Motion passes four to one. Okay, with that, where are we? I think we are at, there's no oral communications tonight, so we're going to do remarks. So let me do my remarks first, and then we'll go on down the line. So our remarks are, there are several upcoming community events that are celebrated in December. December's a busy month before we have another council meeting, so it's a great time to get out and experience our fun activities in town. The VVBA's tree lighting, Friday, December the 5th. Is that a week from, no, that's two weeks away, right? Friday, December the 5th. On Saturday, the 6th, is the Chambers, a comic book Christmas parade. That'll take place at 1:00 PM, and I believe the route's different this year. I think it's going from Famous Dave's, am I right? Famous Dave's are going to start in there, and that's where they're going to, what do you call it, when they stage it? And then they're going to go down Main Street and down, all the way down Main Street. So it'll be a different route this year because of the construction. Saturday, December 7th, the next day, is the Vista Community Clinic's Holiday Home Tours, raising funds for pediatric care for local kids. And one of the homes included in the tour is our Rancho Buena Vista Adobe, and another one is actually Judy Misitz's home, is on that also. Information on the events are all online at cityofvista.com. As we move in the holiday season, we encourage everybody to shop locally. The sales tax generated from our purchases support community services such as fire, sheriff, streets, senior activities, and youth programs. So everybody buy your Christmas presents as much as possible locally. And one other thing, each year at the holidays, we aim to provide extra support to our adopted Marine Corps unit, HMLE 369, made up of more than 400 Marines, as well as their spouses, and 150 children. Collection boxes have already been placed in many city facilities, including the lobby here at our city hall, and at the Jim Porter Recreation Center, and our goal is to provide donations of toys, games, stuffed animals, gift cards, school supplies, stocking stuffers, just anything we can, you know, have to make their holidays merry. Between now and December 2nd, the community is encouraged to join with me, the city council, and the city staff in filling those collection boxes to the brim, so we can bring as much joy as possible to the unit members and their families. The boxes will remain available through December 31st. Anything received after the 2nd, December 2nd, will be used for future HMLE events. And so finally, that's end of my stuff, I will wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and waiting for a baby, my daughter, any moment. I keep checking my phone, but not yet. So I'll go on down the line. Councilmember Aguilera, we'll start with you, actually Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I have no comments.
Okay. Councilmember Campbell?
No comments this evening.
Councilmember Coles?
One comment. I always swore I'm going to do this, and this time I'm going to do it. I'd like for, and I won't be involved again, but for the city to consider some kind of control of campaign signage. Every two years, we were deluged with signs that become the subject of not only litter, accusations, I mean, there's all kinds of bad feelings that go on around signage. In the Shatter Ridge neighborhood, we had the homeowners requesting the candidates, you know, to please adhere to the local rules, and there must be some way and some model that we might look at to, you know, control the abundance, the location. I know we have some controls in place, but obviously, they don't seem to limit what I consider to be a lot of litter in our neighborhood. So, anyway, that's my thought. If others on the council think we might ask staff to look at some alternatives or options, a future council might want to consider that.
I think that'd be a great idea. I mean, we had so many signs.
We get accused, everybody's accused, they're tearing my signs down, and, you know, it creates ill will that is probably unnecessary, and I hate to see that be a, become a part of a campaign.
But we need three people to put it on the agenda, I guess, maybe?
There's a majority there for direction, we'll bring it back.
Is there a majority?
I think we can discuss it, yes.
Okay. I'd like to see it come back and let's talk about, maybe certain places you put them or something, so it isn't just like, so trashy looking, oh my gosh. Anyway, okay, so next is, Councilmember?
Rigby.
I was getting there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to revisit a discussion we had earlier tonight in C10, I think, and that was something that Councilwoman Campbell brought up, was perhaps having an in-depth study done on commercial properties, values, and trends in the city of Vista. Is that possible? Can we do that? Can we? Is staff open to that? Can I get a consensus that we ask staff for that? Because I really think that it's worth revisiting instead of, I would like to...
As a realtor, Leon Associates is a really big realtor and knows all the values in Vista. I mean, they're good at that, so I, when they do this, I trust their judgment, so I don't know what...
I'd like to have a report on an in-depth study, or just a report on commercial properties and trends in Vista, rather than just a P... properties and trends in Vista, rather than just a piecemeal that we think this, this piece is worth this, and this piece is worth that. I think there are some unanswered questions, or I just think there's more information out there, and I would like to have that brought to council.
I'd like to see it brought back as a discussion item. I'm not, I don't think we can get into the details of what that would be at this point, but if that can just be put on the agenda as a discussion item.
How many do you have to have?
We need a third person.
I'd like the majority of the council to give us direction.
Well, I'm not interested, I see enough of it all the time, so. Are you interested, John?
I'm not. And I just think that the mayor's right, in that we do have to trust our advisors on this, and most importantly, I think you just got to trust the market. I mean, it's what the market will bear. I mean, if I put...
And that's my question. That's what I would like to see looked into.
Well, when you advertise a property, it's not like we just went and asked one person. It's, it's been advertised publicly, so...
Advertizing in CoStar, which is a commercial, there's a commercial site, CoStar, and they put it in there, and then you get interest from developers, or anybody that wants to buy property. They CoStar, a lot of times in a multi-listing service. I mean, it's a service that Realtors all look at, so, I mean, I can...
I think what you're going to...
Printout is all it will be for you.
I think what you're going to find, and this may be worth looking at, is that commercial property, we have too much, and that the trend is that some of it's going away, and that's why you see a lot of these developers looking at building apartments, because those are more profitable to them, building commercial property. I believe, right now, there's only one city that I'm aware of that's even adding commercial property right now. I mean, I could be wrong on that, but it's just not, that, the trend is not to add commercial property, because we have an overabundance of it, and I think that's why we're seeing depressed values on that. I mean, I'm with you as far as trying to get the most, I mean, that's what I do for business for my clients, and the mayor does specifically in real estate. You know, we always try to get the best price for our clients. And sometimes, I'm not very happy with the price that I get for my clients, but unfortunately, that's just what the market will bear, and timing is everything, for sure. But I don't know that we're going to gain anything.
So is that a no?
I started with a no, yes.
Okay, so just the other comments I have is, I did join our adopted Marine unit, HMLA 369, for their Marine Corps Ball. I had a great time. It was a lot of fun. I hope next year, more people join us for that. That's a great crowd, HMLA 369. And then, other than that, I just want to say thank you once again to staff, and everybody who answers all of my questions, and gives me information, and is so responsive. I thank you, and I commend you for your hard work for the city.
With that, oh, Patrick, our city manager, our real city manager.
Real city manager, nice. Just a couple of comments, and that is, for the Thanksgiving holiday, we will be closed on Thanksgiving, and the following day, which is Friday, November 28th.
Did we give you those days off?
Actually, we did. And I just want to let everybody know that trash pickup will not occur on that day, so it'll be pushed back one day, so keep that in mind. And we are seeking applicants to fill various city commissions and committees, so if you're interested, please go to the website at CityofVista.com, or stop by the city clerk's office for an application. We'd love to have more volunteer participation. And the winter edition of our Vista, the Vista Magazine, excuse me, Vista Magazine, is online right now, so you can go online and take a look at it, or check your mailbox at your house, because it'll be delivered this week. So thanks, and happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Daryl?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Marcy, city clerk? Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and we are now adjourned, 7:44.